I would like to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, and it is July 21st, 2021. And I will begin by reading our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both MCC and RBB. And we will begin with department updates. Ms. Cottle?
Good morning. I will start where I normally do, and that's with the advisory status for our COVID-19. We do remain in blue, but we also have continued increase in our numbers. So cases per 100,000 this week, when those, when that map populates later today, it will probably be in the low 50s, so right around 51 per 100,000.
Yeah.
I just ran those numbers this morning, and sometimes when you run them, can change by just a little bit. The percent positive is 4.4%. So to yesterday's numbers, if you looked at just yesterday, we were running an average, a rolling average of 11 new cases a day and a 4.6% positivity. And we know that the amount of testing kind of has waned because we don't have near as much, so that is impacting it, but we are seeing more cases. If we reach that 5% positivity, then we will be back in a yellow advisory. And we are seeing that, I think you will see that today on the map, that there are certainly other counties who have been blue, who are now yellow again. So I say that so that people understand that this is not just a trend, it's not unique to Monroe County, it is happening across Indiana and across the U.S. Cases, I've had this asked of me, we are seeing cases among people under 12 and over 70 and everything in between. So there is not just one group of individuals that's being infected with this virus, it is across the board. Our least vaccinated group that is eligible for vaccine is that 12 to 16-year-olds. Part of that, I'm sure, is that they have been eligible the least amount of time. So that is certainly an area that we will continue to work to increase those vaccination rates. Right now, our fully vaccinated numbers in Monroe County stand at 56.3% of our eligible residents are fully vaccinated, and 54.9% have received at least a first dose. So we want to encourage people to continue to do that. We know part of what's going on is the Delta variant. So I wanted to share just a couple of things that the state shared with us yesterday, as a matter of fact. According to the U.S. CDC data, from 6/20 to 7/3, the Delta variant now counts for 57.6% of new COVID-19 infections in the U.S. The proportion was estimated at 31.1% for the two weeks prior. So we are seeing a big increase. Between June 19th and 7/3, about 52% of the samples nationwide were positive for the variant. During that same period of time, 50% of Indiana's samples were positive for the Delta variant. So that is clearly relational to the increase in cases that we are seeing. We know that it is more transmissible, so it is very important for people who are unvaccinated to continue to take precautions. And also for those who are vaccinated to also take, be mindful when you are in crowded places with people that you don't know their vaccination status. You may just want to be more mindful of that so that you can decide if you want to take extra precautions as well. Breakthrough cases do occur, but we know that they are still accounting for a very, very small number of new cases. And certainly, even if you have a breakthrough case, your chances of needing hospitalization or having severe reactions from the disease are lessened if you are fully vaccinated. So those are the important things that I wanted to share about that. School guidance is out, and the Indiana Department of Health and the CDC have the same, they're sharing that guidance. Local schools this year are responsible for implementing measures to address the impact of COVID-19. So you will see different schools doing different things in terms of masks and distancing, but there is very clear guidance in terms of what is recommended. On school buses, masks are required, and that is part of that federal mandate with public transportation. You are required to be masked whether you are vaccinated or not. The communicable disease rule does still address COVID-19. It is a reportable infection, it needs to be investigated, and those who are infected shall isolate, and they shall quarantine if they need to. So this is all part of that school guidance, that schools, while they are responsible for setting standards perhaps about whether or not they require masks for everyone or just those who are unvaccinated, those kinds of things, there are still things that are required. Schools cannot not tell somebody to isolate or to quarantine, those are still requirements. So I just wanted to go over that. I know that we've gotten some questions or been questions about that because the school year looks a little bit different than it did last year. And the last thing that I will leave you with is that the Morton Street Community Testing Site is scheduled to close on July 30th. It will close a little bit earlier than normal so that we can make sure that the lab courier gets there and picks up all those specimens and none is left behind, and then we will begin decommissioning that site. So I want to thank you and the hospital and the city and IU for contributions to making that last this long, and I want to thank the fabulous staff that have been there during this past year to serve our community with testing. And that's it.
Thank you. Yes, we certainly appreciate the huge efforts that the staff have put in, they've been truly wonderful. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Givens?
Yes, after the testing site closes down, where can people go for testing?
Yeah, there are a variety of places, and the best, the best and what should be the most up-to-date information is go to the state's west dashboard. There's a map, you can click on testing, and you can see across Indiana where your sites are. We also have a list that we put together as of June 30th, should be up to date, but I, please don't hold us to that, information does change. There are lots of pharmacies, providers' offices that provide testing as well. There is some over-the-counter testing, rapid testing that's available. Certainly, the PCR is still the gold standard, and we would encourage you to see a provider, look, go to pharmacy, clinic, those kinds of things. But there's still a lot of options, and those are listed on that testing map. That's the best place to get the information for you. But I think that you will see them more available in providers' offices, so point of care.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, that's good to know that there'll still be plenty of places where people can get tested. The fact that there's over-the-counter testing is rather new to me. Is it as efficacious?
Well, it is like the Binexx Now rapid test, you know. The test itself is how well the person who's doing the test on themselves does it would be the question that would come into play, but in understanding what those results may mean. So a negative test doesn't necessarily mean that you're not infected, you could still be incubating, those kinds of things. If someone is symptomatic and a rapid test is negative, we do a PCR as a follow-up because it could be a false negative. So that's important for people to understand, even though that is an option for them. And the same is true with, sort of with the map in terms of vaccine, you can find out where to get vaccinated on a similar map, but that is also being sent and will be more available in providers' offices as well. So when you're in, you're seeing your medical provider for something else, they may talk to you, hopefully they'll talk to you about whether or not you've been vaccinated, answer any questions you have, and be able to vaccinate you right then. We are planning, we usually do school clinics and do flu shots in the fall for schools. We are planning to do that again this year, and we'll have COVID vaccine available for those who are eligible as well.
Thank you. Yes, so I guess people should keep a close eye on the state dashboard, which is where you can get the most up-to-date information about both testing and vaccination.
Yes.
All right, next we have Ms. Allison Moore from the Emergency Management. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, thanks for having me again this week. We have our August blood drives. We do not have all of the numbers in from July yet, so hopefully by next week, we'll have those reports. I did get an email, just a quick response that it was successful, and we continue to have those successful drives. Our August dates are the 26th and the 27th, they are both in the timeframe of 1 to 7. Those will be the last two drives we have that are held at the Convention Center. The Monroe County Convention Center has been fabulous in working with us to schedule these throughout the entire pandemic, and they're starting to open up a little bit more. And so we are looking at an alternate location, and so at this time, we're going to continue those drives, and hopefully we'll have more information about where the new location will be very soon. But for now, the August drives are the 26th and the 27th, both from 1 to 7. Those dates are on our website, and you can also hop on the redcross.org website and make an appointment timeframe. Even as things are opening up, they're definitely keeping that area secured as those individuals come through to make those donations, and so you can make an appointment that works for you and make that donation to continue to have our drives be so successful. So excited about that. We still are, our application process for the Small Business Administration is still open. The SBA assistance that was in our county is not there now, but we do have information on our website, and you can call, there's a telephone number, they can walk, those staff members can walk you through how to do an application, there's a link that you can do an online application, and they can actually even enter the information for you and complete the application if you do that through the phone. So lots of options. If you had any flooding from the June flood event, the 18th and 19th, I encourage you to go to our co.munro.in.us website and see if you could qualify for the Small Interest Business Administrative Loans. As I've mentioned before, if you do not qualify for those loans, or you do in fact get denied, then you can complete an application for the Indiana Disaster Relief Fund. That information is also on our website, and if you have any questions about that or that process of how that works, our office is more than happy to help any Monroe County resident that was affected by the storm, connecting them with the correct people that they need to speak to and making sure that they have the correct information. So it is all on our website, but we're more than happy to assist in any way if there's an individual that could use additional assistance. Our office number is 812-325-4321, and we would be more than happy to assist. We are continuing to have some hot weather come in, it looks like it's going to be in the 90s on Saturday. So we've kind of had that pop in and out with the weather, we're continuing to monitor that. We currently don't have cooling stations open. We do always say that our fire stations are readily available for anyone in the public if they do need to pop in to cool off. Technically, those stations, cooling stations aren't open, but it all means if you feel that you're getting overheated or you need to go somewhere for a small amount of time that is in a cool place, our fire stations always have their doors open and are always willing to help and assist. So those are always an option, and the Emergency Management Office will continue to monitor the weather and will advertise if, in more detail if those cooling stations are in fact needed. Some helpful hints just to think about in these hot months is when the weather is increasing, like it will, it looks like it's going to do on Saturday, stay inside in the air conditioning or take breaks. If you're out, you know, if you're out working in that heat, make sure you go in, cool off, cool yourself down, get yourself rehydrated, and then of course, you know, go back out, but don't overheat yourself. Never leave anyone in a vehicle, especially small children that can't get themselves out of the vehicle without assistance. And of course, always check on your neighbors and elderly in those hot situations. So those are just some helpful hints that we have. Those are also on our county website as well, since we are gearing up for that hot, hot weather. And that's all I have today.
Thank you. Commissioner Givens, any comments or questions?
I just want to thank Ms. Moore for continuing to try to organize the blood drives, I know how important they are. And so kudos to you and to Kate for making that effort for people.
Yes, I'd also like to thank the Convention Center for all the help they've given with this. They have really come through during the pandemic and helped out in every way they possibly can, so we certainly want to recognize that. And I would also mention that while, of course, it's incredibly important to not leave children in hot cars, please also do not leave your pets in hot cars.
Absolutely.
It can frequently kill them, and if it doesn't kill them, they're likely to be so miserable, they may tear your car apart. So it's a really good idea to not leave pets in hot cars. Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Very true, thank you for that, Commissioner Jones.
And now we will hear from Ms. Ridge with Highway.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just have a couple announcements. We're still in the Ketchum Road area for paving, we'll be there probably a couple more weeks. We still do storm cleanup, especially after last week's rains, continuous rains. That puts some of our projects a little bit behind. I know we advertise on the website and also in the newspaper of the days that we're going to be doing work, and it's always weather permitting, of course. At this time, most of the roads on the west side have been opened up, the Bottom Road, Woodall Road, we're out checking the roads on the east side, but I think pretty much the waters have ceased and we were able to get all the roads back opened up. And the last thing that I want to announce is we will be doing a ribbon cutting today at 4:30. This is for the new Profile Parkway Extension, it runs through the ABB property from Curry Pike to Gates Drive. We will be meeting at the roundabout, and we encourage anybody from the public that would like to attend. We're thrilled with this project, opening up that property for development, and of course, more connectivity to get to the west side establishments and hopefully eliminating some of the traffic on Third Street and Curry Pike. So that's all I have, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Commissioner Givens?
Looking at the map of the Profile Parkway Extension, it's, wow, huge figure eight kind of thing, and to design it and to get it really put in place, quite an accomplishment.
Yeah, we're thrilled with that project. We got it into the TIF, as Projects on the West Side TIF in 2015, so you can see, even not using federal dollars, it takes you about five years to get a road built and completed. And like I said, it's no federal dollars involved, so it was all just local match. We want to thank the RDC Board for supporting that project and the Commission, Monroe County Commissioners and the Council. Like I said, it's a great project, and I think the public will be thrilled to be able to use that corridor.
Yes, it's very exciting to finally have this ribbon cutting happening. I hope lots of people will attend, and I think it's going to make a big difference with the traffic on the west side, which has been kind of problematic for a while now.
Yes, and we are doing ribbon cutting, there is a couple little things tied up ends that we need to do, so it might not officially open to the public just today at 4:30, but it will soon follow. We just need to get some detection loops in for the new, for the traffic signal that was modified out of Curry Pike so that traffic runs smoothly. So it's a great project, very proud of it.
Excellent, very exciting. And I'd also like to remind everyone that with the never-ending rain that we seem to be experiencing, all kinds of projects are way off schedule, so people need to be aware of that and patient with. Everyone does their very best to finish things up.
Thank you for that.
All right, and next we have public comment, which is for items which are not on our agenda, and there's a time limit of three minutes. After two and a half minutes, you will hear this tone, which will mean that you have 30 seconds left. And if you have anything you'd like to say, please raise your hand, which you will find at the bottom of the screen. And... I am not seeing anyone.
Me either.
Thank you. I believe we have no public comment today. So we will move on to our regular business. Ms. Givens?
Move to approve the Board of Commissioner minutes from July 14th, 2021.
Second. Do you have any comments or corrections?
Well, I found one omission that I sent to Ms. Hill over the weekend, and it's, the correction has already been posted on the website with the minutes that are up there, so I appreciate her very quick response to all this.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Cottle? Or...
It's not on the call.
Mr. Schilling, can you call the roll, please? Or maybe Ms. Prudy?
I can do that.
But now we have Mr. Schilling.
I can, I'll do the roll since I was the last one to tag in here. So Commissioner Givens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas is not present. Motion passes two to zero.
The next order of business?
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, July 21st, 2021.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, would you like to tell us more about the claim? I'm afraid you're still muted.
I tried, but yes, of course, I'd love to share the information. Good morning. The total was $2,010,828.81. $652,330.28 was for E and B paving for 2021 CCMG or Community Crossings Matching Grant paving. $254,532.11 was for Anthem Blue Cross and Blue Shield, primarily for July claims. Finally, $206,141.58 were for the City of Bloomington for July PSAP Lit for Central Dispatch, Public Safety Answering Point.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Givens?
No, thank you for summarizing 32 pages of claims that were necessary to review.
My pleasure.
Right, and do we have any public comment on this item? And seeing none. Ms. Prudy, would you like to call the roll again?
Most certainly. Commissioner Givens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes two to zero.
Thank you.
And I would like to note that we received the June 2021 report from the Treasurer. Now we'll move on to new business. Commissioner Givens?
Move to approve ordinance 2021-29, transfer of a parcel to Town of Steinsville for public purpose.
Second. And Mr. Schilling, would you like to tell us about this?
Yes, thank you. This is a quarter-acre parcel located at the corner of Columbia and Main Streets in Steinsville, which is just across Main Street to the west from the Steinsville School. And this parcel was sold in a tax sale, and the tax deed was issued to keep looking up LLC in about 2010. I think by 2012, they had concluded that it was not going to be useful for him, so they quit, claimed it to the county, and that's how the county came into possession of this tract. Now, we recently received a letter from the Town of Steinsville requesting the county commissioners to transfer that parcel to the town for purposes of a flower garden, which the town wants to establish on that site. And so, under Indiana law, we can make a transfer to another local government entity of property for any consideration whatsoever, on any terms whatsoever, as long as both entities, governmental entities, adopt substantially similar ordinances. So this is the county's ordinance, and if you approve it today, it'll need to go to the county council because the value of the property is over $1,000. And then Steinsville Town Board will have to approve a similar ordinance, and I've spoken with this Steinsville Town Attorney, Darla Brown, and she has prepared that and it's ready to go. So if you desire to transfer this to Steinsville, you can approve this ordinance. And one thing I would note is that the deed for this is set up for President Thomas's signature, so if you move to approve this, that motion should authorize President Thomas to sign this on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Commissioner Givens?
Well, then I amend my motion so that we include the fact that Commissioner Thomas is permitted to sign this over on behalf of the three of us.
And I'll second your amendment. And I'd have to say that this sounds like a wonderful idea to me, I can't see that this piece of property is doing anyone any good right now, and I always appreciate flower gardens, so I'll probably take a ride out there to see it next year. Do we have any public comment on this item? And... I don't see any. Ms. Prudy, would you like to call the roll?
Most certainly. Commissioner Givens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes two to zero.
Thank you. And next item, please.
Move to approve ordinance 2021-30, implement cybersecurity requirements as required by state law.
Thank you. Mr. Schilling, I believe this is you again.
Yes, thank you very much. Yeah, this ordinance is designed to address a recent change to the Indiana Code, which requires counties to report cybersecurity incidents to the State Office of Technology within two days of the incident. And a cybersecurity incident is a malicious or suspicious occurrence that consists of an attack vector that might affect the county in some ways, county government, the public safety. And the attack vector is defined to include ransomware, business email compromise, volun- vulnerability exploitation, zero day exploitation, distributed denial of service, website defacement, and any other sophisticated attack like that. When we presented this to you at the work session, Commissioner Givens asked what those attack vectors were defined to mean, and I did not know. But within an hour of that question being asked, we received a memo from the Office of Information Technology that included the definitions of those terms. And I don't want to sound paranoid, but that's quite a coincidence there.
You didn't know I had that kind of power, did you?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't either.
But yeah, so we do have definitions of that if you're interested in. But basically, the things that you hear about on the news where someone takes over your system and demands a ransom, or they flood your system with requests so that it essentially shuts down, or they find some kind of software defect that they can exploit to disrupt the service that's being provided. So this ordinance pursuant to the statute designates the primary reporters for the county as the chief technology officer of the TSD, Technical Services Department, the Commissioner's Administrative Assistant, and the county's cyber insurance carrier. And we have to provide the contact information for each of those positions every year by September 1st to the Office of Information Technology. And so we have the definitions, we have the designation of reporters, we have the reporting requirement that requires a report to be made in two days, and that is the essence of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Ms. Givens?
No, it sounds like quite a reasonable thing to be doing at this stage.
Yes, certainly. At the very least, any attack of this sort causes a lot of inconvenience, and it can be a whole lot more disastrous than that. So it's good to be as protected as we possibly can be.
Yeah, and I would point out, I think Angie and Eric have been following this practice for a long time. This just formalizes that for purposes of the statute.
Well, thank you very much for keeping an eye on it, and we're happy you'll be continuing to do that. Is there any public comment on this item? And I do not see any. So Ms. Purdy, would you please call the roll?
Most certainly. Commissioner Givens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Move to approve Indiana University Agreement for COVID Contact Tracing.
Ms. Cottrell, I believe this is your item.
It is, thank you. Yes, this is for contact tracing. Last year, part of our wonderful partnerships with the university, they really managed most of the contact tracing for people affiliated with the university. So if they did the testing, for example, they did that contact tracing and follow-up, and it really allowed us to work very, very closely together to get that information quickly, to get those individuals interviewed very quickly, assessed, because so many of them are in kind of congregate living settings, whether they live in apartments, dormitories, or other housing. Oftentimes, there's more than one individual living together. So the contract that we had ended June 30, and when we were talking, we would all like to continue that through this school year. So this would just essentially renew this agreement through June of 2022. And we appreciate all the help they are willing to give us.
Thank you. And I'm afraid I forgot to second this motion, so at this time, I will second it. And Commissioner Givens, do you have any comments or questions?
I just have a comment. I am so pleased at how county government has been able to work with Indiana University through this pandemic. It has been phenomenal, and I feel like it has kept IU students and Monroe County residents much, much healthier and safer.
It has been a fabulous partnership, and I know that IU has expressed that when they talk to other universities and communities, whether it's the Office of Student Housing or some other entity, that it is not commonplace. And I found that when I was talking with other health departments, even just in the Big Ten, when I was talking with other health departments. They don't all have that close communication and good communication as we do. So we are extremely lucky and blessed to have that.
Yes, I'd have to say that what we might consider to be a bit of a silver lining to this whole pandemic has been the amazing partnerships that we have developed, and not just with IU, but many, many different entities have really stepped forward and all worked together to help us through this situation, help all of us through it.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. And is there any public comment? Seeing none. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Givens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next item, please.
Move to approve ratification of East Lawrence Water Authority for Hunter's Road Phases Two and Three, Hunter's Creek Road Phase Two and Three, Fund Number 8163, and the amount of $345,470.
Second. Ms. Ridge?
Hello. So we discussed this last week. Ever since we did the work plans for the Hunter's Creek Road project, some of the utility cost materials have gone increased. So we had to do a new reimbursement contract. It increased the amount by $86,470. As you will see in your upcoming work session, NDOT has sent us a new contract so that they will assist with the cost of that increase. So this is to approve the increase with the water company, and then later I will have a contract with NDOT that covers the cost of this additional utility cost. The county portion is $17,294. And I will answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Commissioner Givens?
No, I'm sorry that costs have gone up, but we need to have this taken care of, taken care of correctly.
Yeah, the project is under construction, so that was kind of the need to get it going so it doesn't hold up the project, and the longer you take for construction, then it can increase the cost more, so.
Yes, yes, costs of construction have been going up in a rather amazing rate, and it's not too surprising to hear this. I suppose we may be hearing it involving other projects eventually.
Probably not, but...
It'd be nice if we didn't. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes two to zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve Raggle Inc. Agreement for Roger Street Bridge Number 908. Fund name, Cumulative Bridge, Fund Number 1135, and the amount of $737,249.22.
Thank you, Ms. Ridge. Oh, second, I'm sorry, Ms. Ridge.
That's okay. So this is one of our Community Crossing Matching Grant Programs that was awarded in January. So 50% of that cost will be a local match at $368,624.61. The other 50% is provided by NDOT. We plan on beginning the work the first week of August and lasting approximately 30 days for that. It's a bridge deck overlay and some minor structural repairs.
Thank you. Commissioner Givens, any questions or comments?
Where exactly is Bridge Number 908? I should have asked you before, but...
It's the bridge just north of 11th Street. So where Upland is, it's the bridge that goes kind of over the railroad tracks to 12th and 13th Street headed north.
That's a very heavily traveled bridge, yes.
It is. We have gone through, of course, it's a city street. I attended the City of Bloomington Public Works Meeting in July. We have the pedestrian detour approval. We have the signage approval and the detour routes. There's no homes or businesses located within that stretch, so people will be able to get to reroute to their homes and businesses via the other city streets with minimal impact.
Thank you. Yes, this is going to be somewhat of an inconvenience to people, and hopefully, it being August, it may not rain, and the project really will get done on time.
We hope so. We hope so.
Yes, yes. And is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes two to zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve Hassler Escavating LLC Agreement for Various Sidewalk Curb Repairs and Reconstruction. Fund name, Motor Vehicle Highway. Fund number, okay, Fund Number 1176, and the amount as needed.
So we are committed to replacing or repairing sidewalks within our jurisdiction throughout the county. We have a complete inventory of sidewalks, ramps throughout the whole county, which is very extensive. So we commit a certain amount of big MVH budget each year to satisfy our ADA compliance plan of replacing and repairing sidewalks and ramps. We did receive quotes. Hassler Escavating was the lowest, most responsive bidder. We will use this for excavating company on as needed for different project areas. It was hard not to exceed on this because different areas will have different needs, and depending on the size of the project, we might just be doing two slabs of a piece of sidewalk, and that'll be one quote or one project location, and then we might be doing an entire half-mile length of a roadway. So each project is unique in itself, but we just do it to where we stay within our budget, what we have budgeted, and then when that's exhausted, then we wait for the new year to start a new budget with this. The cost for this is $48 per foot with a minimum of 100 foot per location and $300 per ramp.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, Commissioner Givens?
No, just I'm glad that we're moving forward with our ADA kind of efforts here.
Yes. Do we have any idea of how many projects they might be able to accomplish in a year?
I will tell you for, I would believe this would be our third year in a row that we are still in Van Guren subdivision. Van Guren subdivision was one of our oldest subdivisions, a lot of trees uprooting sidewalks. So that was our number one priority when we put our plan together to be in compliance. So I'm hoping that we will be finishing that area up in the next year or two, and then we'll move to our next priority. There's different areas that we might receive a complaint about trip hazards and things like that that we'll might send another crew that's in-house to do some grinding of the sidewalk to promptly make those repairs immediately.
Yes, we do make a true effort to keep everything as accessible as we possibly can, which isn't always easy in these areas that have a whole lot of big trees.
Yeah.
Yes. Is there any public comment on this item? And seeing none. Ms. Purdy, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Givens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes two to zero.
Thank you. And we have no appointments today. I believe Commissioner Givens has an announcement she would like to make.
Thank you. I just received an email yesterday. The Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs has announced community development block grants, and these are for owner-occupied rehabilitation of homes. There is an application that individuals can make to apply for money from the state, directly from the state. And so we have put information about that up on our website. It's under the Recent News section of our homepage at co.munro.in.us. I just want to alert people to the fact that applications are accepted through the end of day on August 28, 2021. But of course, you're encouraged to get applications in earlier than that in case there are glitches, or you have questions, or anything like that. But again, this is an owner-occupied rehabilitation pilot program to help people with repairs of their home.
Great, that sounds like a very valuable program. Hopefully, a lot of people will take advantage of it. And there are no other announcements. Our next meeting will be on July 28. And we are now adjourned, and we'll return in five minutes for our work session.